This is the regular meeting for June 20, 2017. Please rise for the moment of prayer, insightful reflection, and pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Corporal Corvo.
President Dastifan. President. Alvin Donahue.
President.
Here.
Who are you?
Excuse.
Hadad?
Here.
Keed? Mia?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
O'Hara?
Here.
Rector?
Here.
Stilair? Here. Form present.
Motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the May 16 meeting and place them on file. May I have a moment, please? Priscilla? Lauren? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Motion to dispense with the reading of the City Treasurer's report as of May 31, 2017 and place it on file. The motion? Priscilla? Lauren? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Committee reports. May I have a motion in a second to place the committee reports on file? Lauren? Priscilla? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bills, list of bills. May I have a motion in a second to pay bills? Henry. Priscilla.
I have a problem before we vote on them. It has to do with the $118.50 for William Shannon. This is for his car being towed during an emergency?
Yes.
I'm not really sure why the city's paying for this.
Well, the Alderman Mia, during the snow emergency, told neighbors in his neighborhood where to park on the evening of the snow emergency. I don't know how many vehicles got towed that evening, but a few that did get towed, the towing charges were resolved through DPW and HPD, whether it be because of signage issues or other things. To be quite honest with you, I'm opposed to paying this bill because it's not the council's responsibility to pay this bill. It was Alderman Mia's choice to knock on doors and tell people where to park on the evening that the emergency took place. When there was postings on the website, TV stations that broadcast the emergency, radio stations that broadcast the emergency, and county phone calls, robocalls, that took place to let people know that there was an emergency that took place in the city of The reason why it's here is because this was the one that Alderman Mia had contacted, told the man to park on the wrong side of the street, and by the time the police came through, the man was out of town. The car was towed.
Do we know how many tow charges the HPD or DPW?
I think it was a total of four. I think the number was four, and this was the only one that is being charged to us. I responded by saying that the council has a small budget. We don't have a very large budget, and I don't think it's our responsibility to pay for the towing.
I would take it a little farther. I mean, it's not our money. It's the taxpayers' money, and the money from DPW's budget and HPD's budget that was used is also the taxpayers' money. All of this money comes from the taxpayers, one way or another, because there aren't other sources of funds for the city to expend. I'm a little perplexed why this would cost the city $1,000. I realize that the parking emergency law is highly flawed, and two-plus years ago, the city received a unsolicited draft replacement law, amendment to the local law, from Giffey Whitbeck, who was the city's attorney for many, many years, and also from Amy Lee, who's a Land Doomsday expert attorney who lives here in the city and is a property owner in the city. Those were on the agenda of the legal committee when I left its chairmanship in December of 2015.
Yes.
But I don't think that they were ever acted upon after that. So, I mean, this has been an issue, but the fact that, you know, a city law is imprecise is not, shouldn't be shocking. Our laws are just terrible, especially the older ones, and this is one of the older ones. But if a citizen relied on an individual's advice to where they should park or not park during a particular snow emergency, I don't understand why that becomes his or her neighbor's obligation to pay.
Alderman Mia?
How is that a matter? That's not a matter. This car, why you tow? You know the address? It's going to my...
I don't know the address.
Let me bring it.
The only address that I know was a mailing address.
No, you didn't call me to go in Second and Third block?
I was told it was...
No. That's the dog in the bed.
I was told that it was somebody that you contacted.
Okay, no. This is the issue. I called there personally. My neighbor called the police station. They said, "You have to park the outside." So, police... On the same time, I called, like, "Why you want my neighbor?" And Ronnie Farrow said, "The police station called this one." I know. Can you find out why you did this? You were towed? Is it Columbia Street or further down? Can we find it out?
I can't find out this minute, no. The only thing that we have connected to the bill is the receipt that he paid, that he paid the towing charge.
No, no, no. You have a record, right? I was asked, I told the mayor, "Where is the parking?" So, question was, it's not a happen, so no emergency, and they called, even if you call the police department, a lot of times, they say, "You have to park the outside." So, outside Columbia Street, all I say is inside. So, parking, they said, "To the outside." They don't look at anything. And the same time, we have a conversation, the same time, that, "Oh, you just was towed these people to outside." I only say one person to, that my neighbor, like, 232, that said, "Other side, we have to park." Lot of people call that we have such a other side, the police department. So, question was, my question was, blaming comes to me. I don't go to the, "Why did that school was come home? What area is the towing? Can you find out for me?" And I was asked that clarification from the mayor, and she didn't answer me either. So, she blaming to me, "Oh, Alderman Mia says, like, the whole Columbia Street is not a tow." So, question, is that... I say, "Look, if up front of my house, like, they are not towed, towing the down, the Columbia Street over there, by the overing hall there, I never go over there to watch through."
Well, we'll have to find out, but it's still on the list. It's still on the listing bills.
This is information delivered by the police department. So, hold heavy snow, 2:30 in here. We don't need to clean the outside. So, the people are, 7:00, 8 o'clock, the outside, they call the police department, and the police department says that we have to park the outside.
Did you tell Mr. Shannon on that evening where to park his cars?
No. There is no answer. I told the mayor in their office.
So, you didn't have a conversation with Mr. William Shannon regarding where to park his car during the snow?
No, I don't have it.
Because that's the gist of this entire thing.
Well, the other question I would have is, are you saying, which it sounds like you are, that the police gave the wrong information?
Yes.
Or, the other thing you were suggesting was that they, even though they told the car owner to park on the outside, that they actually, even if he was parked on the outside, they'd towed him anyway?
That is...
Okay, well, the police department records will show what car was towed from what address.
Right. Can you find out that one?
Well, of course, it can be found out.
Find out, there have no car to between Second and Forest Street in Columbia.
I'm still not really clear. Why are we being, why are the taxpayers of Hudson being asked to pay for this?
Right.
At all.
Why, we've spent a tremendous amount of time discussing it, and emails going back and forth, and $100 that we shouldn't pay.
Can I make a motion to pay, we pay the bills except for that one amount? Or...
No.
No?
Well, we didn't have, we didn't have, did we have a motion in the second to pay bills?
Yeah, we did.
Yes, we did. Okay. And then...
So, we have to vote?
Yeah. I just want to say that, Abdu, it's okay to be wrong. And it's just okay to be wrong. We can work this out. Moving on, we can pay this and try to remedy so this doesn't happen again for any future council member.
Okay. I take your responsibility. If I have, only about which question I told you, that car or that my neighbor car you towed, that I'm taking responsibility for that. But I'm not taking responsibility, the whole Columbia Street, the towing, and blaming the Abdu's, it's not appropriate.
So, are you...
Okay.
Are you reimbursing HPD and DPW?
Okay. No. Question was, my Columbia... No, no, my Columbia. Because I can blame for that. My Columbia is not a tow any car, that between Second and Third. One car was tried to tow, and I found, I missed stop it. I asked, I was with Sergeant Moon, so he said, "Okay, so how come you people tell us to park the outside?"
So, you're saying that Sergeant Moon told somebody, "Stay here," and that person stayed there, or they went there, and then Sergeant Moon turned around and ticketed them?
No, I don't see that. I don't see, when I see that up front of my house, one car tried to tow, I stopped them. Said, "Don't tow," because, and before, they pay the money, everything that. So, question was, they have no car between two, my block, Second and Forest Street in Columbia, no car towed. And that's why I had a question. Where did it come from, that these two car come from? If it could come from the other street, you blame the Abdu's.
That's a possibility. But are you challenging the ticket, really, is what it sounds like?
I'm not challenging the ticket. I'm challenging if these two car is not between Columbia Street, Second and Third Street, between Hudson. It's not. There's no car towing that night in the between...
Well, there's no way for us to confirm that.
No. Police told that.
Well, tonight, I'm saying, we cannot confirm that tonight.
I asked the mayor, mayor didn't remember that, that the same night came, but I said that. And I was, I told her, "I know the where the car was towed."
Right, but, Abdu, so it sounds like you're challenging the correctness of the ticket and the towing fee.
I'm not challenging the car to, I'm challenging...
So, the car was in the wrong place, and it was towed properly, correct?
It could be, could be.
And now, could be. What are you, what are you challenging here?
I'm challenging between, I told my neighbor, like, my one house neighbor, the opposite side police department towed. So, this is the between place Second and Forest Street, not further down. I never go to the further down, the longer door. She told me that, "Oh, Alderman Mia, lock the door every, everything, that's the wrong side," blaming that. I told only my block, one, two house, that a car should be parked other side. I take that as, I told them that, that is, I told them, but not further down. This car was a towing from my, not my block, it's other way block.
I know one block, zero block, yeah.
Yeah. So, what is it, what is it, what is it getting there?
But you can't ask me where the car was parked, and now you're telling me that it was parked further down. How do you know that?
Yeah, because when the towing car went over there, I was present that time. I was wobbling that time, because it was the night, 1:00.
Right, but I don't see where it matters.
It's not relevant.
I know, that is not relevant. And no...
Are you trying to get out of being blamed for this? Is that your intention?
There's not an intention limit, but I think so is not a... I never go to the down that says, "Oh, you parked over there." I told it to my neighbor.
I believe Mr. Mia. Fine, I believe you 100%. It makes the city's obligation to pay for this. I don't mind. I think, I think that Mr. Shannon should pay for his towing. Everybody else pays. And if he believes that he has a claim against the city or Mr. Mia, let him bring it. Right. But in the interim, I would like us to pay the rest of our bills, because I think that the rest of your bills, while some of them are kind of high, but whatever, are probably legitimate, as far as I can tell, but that one just seems bizarre.
So, would you suggest, like the other, let's say, four or five people that were covered by the other two city departments, out of taxpayer money, of course, he should maybe seek reimbursement from them rather than the common council?
Well, I...
Because it's silly for us to hang out one person when four or five others were reimbursed for the same incident.
Fair enough.
Right.
I agree. And, you know, next month at the Finance Committee, I'll be happy to raise this and try to understand it. I did bring the issue up of the ability of agency heads to shift money around like that, see, maybe in another context. And we did get some explanation of that, which was helpful, but I would like to understand that. If the city is being billed for somebody's negligence, then that person should reimburse the suit.
So, can we go back and approve all the bills with the exception of this one? $118?
I didn't sign it. I don't know.
No one signed it. Everything's been signed with the exception of this.
I think so. We should vote. I would urge my colleagues to vote now, and then I think we can make a motion to amend, and then we can make a second motion to vote. So, I think we need three actions, you know.
I agree. I agree. You should go no on this, and then you can propose a new motion.
And then go to approve as a matter of...
Great.
So, we need a motion to...
We need to go...
Roll call vote. Roll call vote on the original set.
Yes, right.
President Dastifan?
No.
Alvin Donahue?
Friedman?
No. Hadad?
No.
Mia?
Epstein.
Moore?
No.
O'Hara?
No.
Rector?
No.
Stilair?
Can I get a motion in a second to pay the bills minus the $118 for William Shannon? Rick? Priscilla? Roll call vote.
President Dastifan?
Aye.
Alvin Donahue?
Aye.
Friedman?
Aye.
Hadad?
No.
Mia?
Epstein.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Rector?
Aye.
Stilair? Carrie.
Communications. Communications from Animal Crime Incorporated submitting a report for grant money previously awarded. May I have a motion and a second to receive the communication and place it on file? Second, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolutions, appointing commissioners of the roll call vote.
President Dastifan?
Aye.
Alvin Donahue?
Aye.
Friedman?
Aye.
Hadad?
Epstein.
Yes.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Aye.
Stilair?
Resolution number two, submitting petty cash fund, supplementing petty cash funds for the operation of a garbage bag vending machine. Roll call vote.
President Dastifan?
Aye.
Alvin Donahue?
Aye.
Friedman?
Aye.
Hadad?
Three months in a receptacle? Yes. Aye.
Mia?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Rector?
Aye.
Stilair? Aye.
Resolution number three, adopting a fund balance policy. Roll call vote.
President Dastifan?
Aye.
Alvin Donahue?
Aye.
Friedman?
Aye.
Hadad?
Aye.
Mia?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Rector?
Aye.
Stilair?
Aye.
Resolution number four, amending the members of the Hudson Industrial Development in Hudson, roll call vote.
President Dastifan?
Aye.
Alvin Donahue?
Aye.
Friedman?
Aye.
Hadad?
Aye.
Mia?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Rector?
Aye.
Stilair? Carrie.
Number five, which is new tonight, authorizing a budget amendment to the fiscal year 2017, extreme winter recovery capital reimbursement allocation. May I have a motion in a second, please? Henry? Any discussion? Roll call vote.
President Dastifan?
Aye.
Alvin Donahue?
Aye.
Friedman?
Aye.
Aye. Hadad?
Aye.
Mia?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Rector?
Aye.
Stilair? Carrie.
Resolution number six, authorizing the transfer of funds within corporate works, cemetery, and student department accounts. May I have an introduction in a second? Henry? Roll call vote.
President Dastifan?
Aye.
Alvin Donahue?
Aye.
Friedman?
Aye.
Hadad?
Aye.
Mia?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Rector?
Aye.
Stilair? Carrie.
Resolution number seven, supporting the mayor's recommendation for the appointment of Michael O'Hara by the Board of Supervisors to represent the city of Hudson on the Columbia County Environmental Management Council. May I have a motion? Can I have an introduction in a second, please? John? Roll call vote.
President Dastifan?
Aye.
Alvin Donahue?
Aye.
Friedman?
Aye.
Hadad?
Aye.
Mia?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Rector?
Aye.
Stilair?
Shouldn't you explain it? Oh, I should.
Stilair, I, and Alderman O'Hara, will you...
Yes. Sorry.
Yes, why? I'm sorry.
I will change.
Okay.
Thank you. Resolution number eight, authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease purchase agreement for certain police vehicles of the city of Hudson, Columbia County, New York, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $165,341.16. May I have an introduction in a second, please? Priscilla?
Heather, would you like to add any comments about this? Because there was so much back and forth about the lease agreement, you know. Just, I know that you probably discussed it very quietly.
We did. No, that's fine. I'm happy to do it again. During the budget process last year, there was discussion about the police department entering into a lease agreement for four new cars. Money for the first lease payment was budgeted in the budget and approved by the common A series of unfortunate events. It was not entirely clear among all the parties involved the level of complexity of entering into an agreement like this involved. The police department, I would argue somewhat understandably thought, it's approved in the budget, they can go and just sign a lease and get the cars. They proceeded that process. We discovered that was happening and put a semi-kibosh on it and said there are a few things that have to happen. Some of those things happened, including a, one of the important things you have to do is make sure that the financial agreement under the lease is comparable to anything you get, for example, out on the bond market, because this is considered financing. It's not just them going to buy a car with money that's been appropriated for them. It's financing. It impacts, it doesn't impact the constitutional debt limit, but it does impact debt in terms of what the city carries. You saw a resolution last month that addressed some of those issues along with the contract, and the common council as a whole authorized a resolution that said that it allowed the city to enter into the agreement that was attached to the resolution and that the police commissioner could sign, which I can understand why that would make sense, because for most expenditures involving departmental budgets, the commissioner is the final signer. However, this isn't just spending expenditures, this is entering into a financial debt agreement. So, there are a couple other things that have to happen to make that happen. One is that there are a variety of regulations we need to make sure are in place, including language that makes sure that the city is not obligated to the long-term debt in a way that, for example, if the city chose not to appropriate the funds to make a lease payment in one of the outgoing years, the only, the only thing that the vendor can do is to take the product back. They can't sue us. They can't sue us for breach of contract. So, we need to make sure that language had been there, most of which was. The second thing, which was probably the single bigger issue, is that according to municipal law, you can only enter into a lease purchase agreement, which is what this is, for what's called the PPU of the product that you're entering into, which is the probable potential use. So, basically, how long you think that product is going to be for, I don't know if you remember, but for the police and courts building, part of it's 25 years, part of it's 30 years. These are regulated at the state level. We don't decide, we don't get to decide how long we think a police car is going to last. The PPU for a police car is three years, which basically means we cannot enter into a five-year financing agreement for a product that the state is telling us only has a three-year life expectancy. So, what you're saying before... So, what you're seeing before you now, there are some other issues as well, making sure that the contract under which the product was purchased, it was purchased under a Westchester County agreement, it was important to make sure that that literal agreement had an open-ended clause that said it was expandable to other municipalities. We've confirmed that that's the case as well. There, we're reworking the contract, they're fine doing it for three years. So what you have before you now is not the contract, but the terms in a resolution that allows, number one, the city to enter into an agreement to purchase these vehicles over a term that is three years rather than five. It meets all the criteria as required by both New York State Municipal Law and New York Finance Law. Of course, obviously, to do that, it's the same amount of money in order a shorter period of time, so each annual payment in the three years will be substantially higher. Part of the resolution is a budget amendment for an additional $21,500, because the payment will go from roughly $37,000 to approximately $57,000. The one benefit of that potentially is that you save on the financing costs, so actually financing over three years versus five saves the city approximately $8,000. It's a lease purchase agreement, I believe originally, they were not planning on purchasing, so basically at the end of the contract, you can buy the vehicle for a dollar. I think the original plan was they would not do that, because according to the police department, their vehicles have approximately a five-year lifespan, so the idea was run that through and then get a new set. But I think we would all agree that if in fact the City of Hudson experiences a five-year lifespan, it would make much more sense to buy out the contract after three years, run the vehicles, cost free for two years, and then worry about replacing them. So, that's what's in front of you today. I'm happy to answer any additional questions you have, or clarify anything if I didn't make it clear enough.
Any other discussion? John?
What's a credit enhancement?
I'd love to see it, I don't know off the top of my head.
Well, because I'm looking at section six of this resolution, too, and I think it's the section that basically is addressing some of these risks that you're discussing and how the City avoids them. I'm looking for councils, section six C, where there's a discussion of, in the case of the failure of appropriate social security, a part of many security run by credit enhancement, or any remaining periodic payments shall be equipped with a newer apparatus, which seems to jog with what you're saying, I just need to understand what a credit enhancement might be in this context, it's not really clear to me.
I think that would be if the city was providing additional security beyond the particular vehicle.
Which the rest of the lineage of section six says we're not.
Exactly.
Okay. I'm sure like a lot of people are troubled by this, because it's kind of peaceful. I have to say, really disturbed by it, the process. I think it's, I think it's a, it's a result of a new police commissioner who's maybe not communicating with the council as much as he should in an air, in a kind of a one-off area, and making sure that they're getting good legal advice on what they're obligating, what their, what their powers are and what they can obligate the city to do. I'd like to vote against this, but I think financially it does kind of make sense, so I will have to say that I'll vote for this today, but when the papers come before us, the definitive agreement, they gotta come on time, we've gotta have at least ten days for reviews, and if we don't, I will not go forward. That's my own thought.
Was this an issue at all during the, in the police committee meeting? Oh yeah, I was gonna bring that up. To echo some of what John said, the last time we spoke about vehicle replacement was in 2016 at a police committee meeting, and I, I'd like to say September, it was just before Gary was replaced. And since then, this has not come up once. I haven't been, it hasn't been brought to my attention to put on the agenda for a police committee, the police commissioner hasn't said anything to me, and I would assume that she has talked to the chief periodically, as they do communicate, but it's complete news to me, I haven't seen this before, it would have been nice to at least be. It is very similar to the financial breakdown we discussed half a year ago, being a pretty good deal for the city in terms of the vehicle leases and the maintenance. That's quite obvious, but I think the only, no, I think, I completely feel that this is not the right way for anyone in the city to go about a bid, a contract like this, or any type of business, we all should be involved in our finances, and not at the last minute. Heather, when did the city attorney get involved in this?
Which city attorney?
How many city attorneys have been involved in this?
Three city attorneys have been involved in this.
All three?
All three.
And first, the first was Andy?
No, Andy I believe was the last one involved in this.
So, oh, oh, I see.
No, Giff was not involved in this, Giff is the only one that has not been involved in this.
Well, there was conversation in 2015 when we appropriated the last one, it's the last two, it was for budget year 2000, fiscal year 2016, but we were having a conversation in 2015, and it was right after the chief had come on, and there was conversation about adopting a formal vehicle replacement policy, so that we never ended up where our maintenance costs were exceeding the value of the vehicles, which is where the city was often with a lot of.
It's where it's been forever until this.
Yeah, and that's because we drive them short distances, at high speeds, and you know, it's just not good for vehicles. But the number of problems that we ran into, one, three years is just not long enough for us to kill a vehicle, even the way that we abuse them like that. But two, it was, I think, that this council, and you know all of it, I can remember, but it was the city's policy, that, that we were going to purchase these vehicles, that there was going to be a, a sort of formal calendar for that process to happen, and I think that's what we expected, the police department to come back with, and instead we ended up with this, so I think there was a real disconnect.
As it mentions this makes a little financial sense, because it does, but it's just the way the execution poorly done.
Yeah. And the commissioner executing a contract without the city, that she wasn't empowered to, is really problematic, and points to a need for, for the commissioner to be more proactive, reaching out to the city attorneys. I mean, to say that three, all three of the city attorneys were involved in this of one part or another, and yet it was executed in a way that's essentially illegal, is, yeah, numerous at some levels, not at others.
Heather?
I just want to say, obviously, the confusion over the past few months in terms of how this should have been done appropriately is clear, I think we've resolved it at this point. The one clarification I want to make is that, John, you mentioned about the contract coming in front of you to be signed, that is not something that would happen. What you're voting on is basically very similar to a bond resolution, where you say, yep, we're gonna go out and we're willing to basically borrow this amount of money. At that point in time, once you've approved it, your job's done, then it becomes basically the job of myself and the city clerk to execute the documents the same way that we execute them in terms of bond issues.
Well, just so it's really clear, I'm not gonna hope to approve anything, I don't care what is said, because I don't know, it's in the fine print. I can't, I can't, I can't square myself with that level of dissing.
Okay, I'm, I'm, okay, I'm not sure you read all of the legal documents regarding the two. On issuance, we did, but if you did, well done you.
Well, no, but I understand them, I understand them as bond issues.
Okay.
They also have special bond and council.
Do you have bond council involved in this at all?
So, more than three attorneys?
No, that was the third.
Ah. Well, now we're not actually making use of people's finances. You know, I, I'd like to see what that, I mean, all this is being done outside of the council, it's like, it's like what New York State does with, with authorities, these are off-balance sheet transactions, and I'm just, I'm not. But, but it feels that way to me, and, and if I had to go this evening, after I was to vote on this, and explain it to a constituent, what we are as a city on the hook for, I would not be able to, and I'm not comfortable at all with that level of non-understanding. That's all.
Thank you. This, this resolution will take two-thirds vote to approve. Roll call vote. President Estefan?
Aye.
Alden Donahue?
Do you support this resolution?
I do.
Aye.
Friedman?
I wish life was that easy, Doc, I have to say.
Haddad?
Hi.
I, I completely support this financial agreement, but, and I, I do think very fondly of Martha, and I just want to say that Gary's dad was always extremely forthcoming. Yes? Let's see, yes.
Mia?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Rector?
Yes.
Sklera? Ayes have 1,572, nays have 161, one, excuse me, 161.
Thank you.
Resolution number nine, declaring the instruction of sidewalks as part of the City Hudson Saford School Project Type II action under CECL. May I have an introduction and a second, please? Bob? Mike? Roll call vote. President Estefan?
Aye.
Alden Donahue?
Aye.
Friedman?
Aye.
Haddad?
Aye.
Mia?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Rector?
Aye.
Sklera? Carrie. Resolution number 10, which is authorizing the application for the New York State Energy Research and Development Authority Clean Vehicle Infrastructure Grant is going to be pulled. Alden O'Hara suggested that we have a special meeting, that we, that all the points of this grant could be discussed and let everybody know what, what the criteria is for the whole package of the grant. Am I saying that correctly?
You're started, this is, this is one element of the New York State Clean Energy Communities, which has 10 different pieces, and it was expressed to me in the economic development meeting, that we needed to understand where this fits in the package, and I'd be happy to do that, I didn't think we'd have enough time on schedule for tonight, so I'll work with, with you to set up another date, so we can deal with this at the time reserved.
So, that's going to be pulled for tonight? And then, resolution number 11?
I have a question on that, I asked him, Mike, a little confusion.
Sure.
Did that go through a committee process, or was it just an individual thing of discussion? Because if the committee, if the committee would come forward to the council, say, we reviewed it, these are the four things out of the 10, did it ever go through that, or was it just?
We, we discussed it in the CAC.
But that's not a.
I, 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 we understand, thank you. But, but.
No committee discussed it?
No, no regular county council committee discussed it, no, thank you.
Resolution number 11, authorizing the transfer of funds for utility expenses at 701 Union Street. May I have an introduction and a second, please? Yeah, introduction and a second. Henry? Priscilla? Roll call vote. President Estefan?
Aye.
Alden Donahue?
Aye.
Friedman?
Aye.
Haddad?
Aye.
Mia?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Rector?
Aye.
Sklera? Carrie. Roll call vote, introductory number one of 2017, amending the city charter to modify the residency qualifications for those individuals employed as police officers with the City of Hudson. May I have a motion and a second to enact the proposed roll call vote? Henry? Priscilla?
Well, you keep looking at your air ducts.
They only stay longer.
I glanced around, and I was looking around.
Roll call vote. President Estefan?
Aye.
Alden Donahue?
Aye.
Friedman?
Sure.
Haddad?
Aye.
Mia?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Rector?
Aye.
Sklera? I have a question. Any new business from the council? John?
Hi. So, I, I received a couple of phone calls over the last week or so, from property owners who were curious about the VAR results, and all the other municipalities around us have released their bar results about two weeks ago. Today is the 28th day since the Hudson City Bar terminated its operations this year, and nobody's received any notice, I'm just wondering if anybody knows anything.
Fierce?
Anyhow, fierce, the one on the digital.
Oh, no, no, I mean, did you, did you have the answer to John's question? That's what I got to a reading in for.
I'm at it.
Heather?
Go, go ahead.
Anyhow, one on the digital, I want, I don't know William Chaney either, so I have to find out, where does it come from the tour, why did this car was happening?
Oh, I know, he used to be a reporter for the Register Star, does Hudson Repsite Guys, very, I think his moral compass is quite in tune, not telling you that.
What is it?
Well, never mind, he'll, he'll get to be a reporter. These are reporters, and he shouldn't be hard to find, right?
Yeah, okay, so, so I'll, I'll find out, and I, it's easy to find out, this person asks the police, the, Alden, do we need to move car or not? That's simple, so, I don't know this person either, he didn't leave my, my, my lab, so anyway.
Is that a no to my question?
I was just checking, but, that's, that's interesting, that's, I have to find out, then, somebody, I don't know what to say, but I, I will find out, I'm at council meeting, I will give you the full report about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other?
I, eventually I'll tell them that one, so.
Wait, wait, not to pay the bill?
I'm not ready to pay the bill until the, I'm, I'm ready to not to pay the bill until the investigation.
That's a question? Why is that a question?
Until I get that, that, where does it come from the tour? If I tour to move, I take responsibility to my, if I take, take me to move, so, if I'm not, it's not, should not come out of my mind anymore with that, in the council meeting. That's, that's. That's, that's my idea, I don't like to, it should be hold it until the source. That's, that's my comment.
Okay, thank you.
Well, can I just, you know, put on the record, like, I hope that the VAR will do its business relatively quickly and let people know, I know that, you know, there's a lot of issues surrounding tax assessments this year, and a lot of people notice change in their assessments and the, and the proposed rule, and I'm not really clear on how many property owners up here before the VAR, but, you know, those folks, they, they are entitled to some sort of response in a timely manner, and while the clock doesn't begin to run on, on their statute of limitations for them to, to pursue additional relief if they, if they feel that they've been properly denied by the VAR, you know, people want to know, they have to pay their bills, and the city needs its taxes, and so everybody who's a property owner or, or a tenant in the city has a, has an interest in this being brought to, to closure sometime soon, and I hope that they will.
Anyone else? Henry?
Columbia, actually, this is for you, I think I went and dropped the ball last week, or maybe it was last month, we were talking about code enforcement and where we might place them, and I can't remember if I said I would contact 401 State or you said you would.
I, I, I made a few phone calls, and I haven't gotten anywhere yet.
Okay.
But I'm going to continue to pursue.
Thanks. Sorry, it's a gossip, I don't know where you're, we're just chatting, but.
Any other business? Any other comments from the council? Public questions? Comments?
Question to adjourn.
Well, please, for all the people that raised their hand tonight, and there's not many, remember to sign things, please, and motion and a second to adjourn. Henry? Okay. You're on me, I can't wait to call somebody, you know, but do you want to favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.